In order to verify compliance with open meeting law, notification adopt the agenda. We also please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in the power, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three, comments from the audience regarding agenda items. We did receive eight comments, all related to item seven A, the 2020 fall reopen plan. After reviewing them, most of them will be covered by tonight's presentation. However, we will, as we normally would, will follow up individually after the meeting to see if anyone has any additional questions. We are going to scan them and keep them in the record for tonight's meeting, but we will follow up with each individual person after tonight's meeting.
Were the individual questions or statements of support one way or the other?
A combination. Some were very specific instances related to a person's personal family situation. Some were basic, how is this going to affect this one child versus these child? So again, instead of going through all of them at this time, especially since with normal comments, we can't address them during a meeting, we'll just follow up individually afterwards with them. Okay? Okay, so that said, thank you for contacting us. And again, we will follow up individually with all eight and all eight people. On to four, student and staff spotlight, gifts and donations. A is donations, Whitman Youth Basketball. Mike or Lisa, whoever.
So we have two donations from the Whitman Youth Baseball.
Two donations from the Whitman Youth Baseball. One is toward the girls' basketball program and one is to our athletic department in general.
Great. Okay. Thank you to the Whitman Youth Basketball Program for the donation. Anybody else? Okay. On to five, consent agenda. A is approval of June vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of June 22nd, July 13th, July 20th, 2020 school board minutes. C is acceptance of donations from Whitman Youth Basketball. D is approval of personnel recommendations. E is approval of the Board of the Annual Declaration and parent notice of the district's student academic standards that will be in effect for the 2020-2021 school year pursuant to section 120.1213 and section 118.301GA1 of the state statutes. Would anyone like to remove an item?
E, please.
E, okay. Anyone else like to move an item? I'll take a motion to approve items A, B, C, and D.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries on to E. Go ahead, Stephen.
So question, the only question I had with that is I looked at what some of the standards were, looking at how they were. Do, once we adapt them, how do we make sure that, or how do we evaluate that we're following them? Is that just part of the curriculum that we've also adopted and that reflects it? Or is there an actual?
So once we, when we look at the standards, like for instance, this, this particular year, we've got some new sets of standards that come in. And so we put all teachers on notice in that particular content area that you have new standards. We send them the links so that they can go and look themselves. As the course of the year goes on, they are working in those curriculum hub documents that we had talked about earlier, where they are going in each year to like, look at what they've got, looking at adjusting curriculum, looking at what needs to be maybe tweaked from the year prior. And we work with them on going through the standards documents themselves because many teachers will just look at the standards and try and make some interpretations. But Wisconsin has gotten pretty good about really putting some supporting documentation along with the standards, why they've been developed, how they've been developed, how to use them, how to actually get them to interact with their, themselves and with other content area standards. So when we meet with those teacher teams, we go through, that's part of the process that they go through in their curriculum development each year. Higher emphasis goes to the people who have new standards or revised standards coming out from the state.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve item five E.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries on to item six. All right, go ahead.
So you just approved in your personnel recommendation, a new director of advancement and analytics. And so she is here today to introduce herself. I know I shared with you her resume, but I thought I would let her in person, maybe give you a little bit more narrative around that. And you can introduce her, as you will see her face quite a bit, as she helps us with our continuous improvement and a lot of other things in the district, so.
Well, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Jen Gunnerman. I come to you with excitement, but also some strategic planning in my background as well as assessment work. I started as a special education teacher in education. I've been an instructional coach. I have a reading specialist license. So in all of my roles, everything has really always been about data and leadership. So I'm excited to bring my skills and join the team here. Lisa and I have already started to work on my 30, 60, 90 day entry plan to ensure that we are, you know, meeting the goals that have been set forth with the position. And so we have a meeting actually later this week to set that up, but then we'll be working on the details and then just me joining part of the team in a bigger fashion.
So when is your first day?
We're still working out the transition plan, but what we're hoping to do is make sure that the district that I'm leaving is set up for success and that if they're, like, I'm in charge right now of certain trainings and stuff like that. So I want to make sure those are all set up and if they were to need me for something that we can be flexible and, you know, just support education in general, this is a crazy time right now. So we're going to lock that in tomorrow.
Well, good. Well, we're glad to have you here.
Well, thank you so much. And two, I know you've seen my resume, but I have experience in smaller districts as well as larger ones. I'm actually coming from the West Bend School District. In each of my roles, I've really done a lot of implementation planning and strategic planning, so that'll be a great, great partnership with the position.
Have you done any research on Whitman School District?
I have.
What have you found out?
Well, I can tell you that people who have gone here are, speak very highly of the district. And when I say that I'm working here and joining the team, they say, I want to come work there with you. So there's a little group that I know that have, like, grew up here and, you know, they really love the school system, want to come back. Another piece is honestly Dr. Olson's leadership. People have spoken highly about her attention to detail, but also her ability to gather teams together, which I think was, is a great fit just to my learning style and my leadership style. I know that the community is supportive, you know, and all the aspects around the planning, but also the pandemic. I mean, that's been a little crazy for everyone. So I did my research. I want to make sure it's a good fit for me as well as, you know, the district. And that's why I'm just excited to be here.
How does the pandemic affect your job or does it?
The job I'm leaving?
No, the one you're, with data, the one you're taking on.
Yeah, so one of the pieces right away, typically we would have state assessments from last year, so we won't have those and we typically get those back in fall. And then when the embargo is lifted, we share those at the school board meeting in October or so. So we won't have that component, but right away, since knowing the information of student success is part of my role, I'll be digging into previous data as well as, you know, with state assessments, as well as like internal, you know, assessments that are given throughout the district. So that piece will be missing this year, but we'll definitely plan and work around it and plan forward as we move forward for this year.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We're excited to have you and hopefully we can get you started soon and you'll be spending a lot of time working on this, that's good.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Very welcome. The rest of the meeting is really exciting, so. Stay around, it's great. Okay, on to six, action items. A, use of referendum surplus. You get a motion to approve?
It's a move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Mike?
Yep, so we've talked about this at the beginning of our cafeteria remodel project about how the funding was going to work for it. And it's kind of coming into shape now and it's working out what I think is really well for us. So as the memo states or the proposal states, we have about $600,000 in referendum contingency. And I gave you a copy of the question to refresh your memory from more than two years ago now, which seems amazing when the referendum passed. And this project, the cafeteria remodel, the multipurpose remodel clearly fits into the language that was put forth at that time. It's quite frankly, an extension right off the tech ed area. It has roofing, it has the infrastructure components as well. So the project itself really fits well with the language that was passed. And so this isn't, this isn't a necessary piece to have the board approve because we approved the project, but I think from a transparency standpoint and just kind of wrapping up the referendum itself, showing where the remaining of those dollars would go, it's important that we kind of just be on the same page and act on it. So you have two options with the dollars. One was towards a project that would fit within the language of the question, or you can reduce debt payments either the following year or in the future with, with the surplus dollars from the, from the project. So as I say in the proposals, most of these dollars came from interest earned over the course of the time that we've been custodians of the dollars. The rest of it really came from contingency on our own projects, not the CG Schmidt projects, but like the Boiler Project, things like that, where we came in under budget. And then a little bit from the CG Schmidt side as well. So that's really what makes up the 600,000 that we're looking now to offset the costs of the cafeteria and multipurpose. So if you have any questions on that or want to discuss anything additional, that's where I would suggest we put our 600,000.
And so Mike and I had talked about this and this very much reflects how we had talked about as a group, funding the cafeteria project. Remember, we had four funding sources. So one was Fund 41, you know, part of the money we had put away from this. Part of that was contingency from this. Another one was taking money from the state as borrowing from the state. And then the other one was leftover Fund 10 if we had operational money. So it looks like our budget worked out favorably with our operations and with our referendum dollars, where we can completely avoid having to borrow any more money for this. So we have already baked this into our budget. You saw the information that was handed out that if we decided to take, if we decided not to use this money, it would be a one-time payment of like $3 to the residents and then would save them something like two cents a year for the next 20 years after that. Or we could avoid the borrowing cost that we would have to take if we borrowed the money from the state. So it seems like this fits into what our original plan is. And I think I would be in strong favor of using it to do it, as we had talked about earlier.
So you won't have to borrow from the state?
Correct.
We, we, we don't have to borrow from the state for this particular project. We, we do, the board, as a board, we did pass the ability to, to borrow $850,000 in order to offset falling off debt. So we still have that at our disposal, Quinn, that if we want to use that state money to knock off other projects on the 10-year capital improvement plan, that in quite frankly, a, a tough time to predict economically, those dollars might really come in handy to, to handle some of those projects. That is still within our ability. We don't have to use that 850 bill to, to, to use on the cafeteria project. Does that make sense? Yeah.
And it still maintains our fund balance where we're not likely going to do the short-term borrow in December.
Correct, that should have, correct.
Anybody else?
Well, I just wanted to say $650,000 is a lot of money and so I'm very impressed that, that our referendum projects came in under, with that amount of money, I think that's a lot.
Yeah, it was a good job, yep.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries on to seven, discussion. A is 2020 fall reopen plan.
Well, when they come over there, then I'll just put it, I'm the only one touching.
Just as a reminder, I'm getting some feedback right now and I did get a couple emails that board members need to speak up. They weren't picking up last time, hence the mask thing, so make sure you talk into your microphones a little bit. Thank you. So I'm going to go through tonight where we are with our reopening plan. I know that there are probably a lot of questions that you may have, and so we're going to go through it section by section and we'll pause. We did that a couple weeks ago. So if you have specific questions on slides, if you could jot down the slide number, that makes it helpful. When we go back, we'll sort of do that in sections, if people have questions on each of them. At the very end, talking about a timeline and what next steps look like in communication, we'll be able to answer that. I do need to start out by saying, if you think that we have all of the answers to everything that's going to happen figured out, you probably will be disappointed tonight. We don't. I don't know any district that does right now. There is no way we possibly can. So what we provided you with tonight is our updates and our responsiveness to the feedback that we're getting, to the current data that we have at this moment, and what our next steps will be after this. I would be remiss to say that this would be a lot easier if there were some actual data from which we could support answers that did not continually change. One of our challenges is that we have three different municipalities from which we receive public health department data and community data, and to try to put that there. I'm not here to debate data because believe me, I love data as much as anybody else. But it is very hard to get that and to be able to determine what actions to take on that. On top of that, we don't really have metrics or what are called gating criteria for us to say absolutely at this level, you should or should not do something. I think a lot of us typically write our state report card, we just got done talking about data and results. We know that at certain numbers, it gives you a certain rating. At a certain point, it means that. This is something that does not have very specific data. And so while we continue to ask people to provide us that data, at what point should we be doing a different action? That isn't coming. And so we can come up with that, but right now, it's very challenging to be able to sort of pick a number at which we do or do not do something. This spring, there was a statewide school closure and then there was a statewide school building opening. It wasn't based on gating criteria or a very specific metric. And so for us to be able to pick one model or the other or a decision, we also should be looking ahead, what would make us change that decision or transition back to a different model? And I think that's the challenging part with all of this. So I'm going to start out with that, but I want that to be the driving factor in what we do as we look at that. What you're going to see tonight is the plan that we are going to be sending out to our stakeholders, probably yet late tonight, so they have a chance to look at it, as we do have stakeholder meetings scheduled this week. We have about 11 of those scheduled with different stakeholder groups at about 45 minutes each. And so we want to make sure that they have a chance to look at this, to be able to ask questions or be able to allow some time to process what they have. So our commitments that we shared with you before, those have not changed, those are still there. We are trying to make a plan that is practicable, that it includes safety foremost, it is equitable in the most possible ways, and that we are using informed data and information that we can to make that decision. That includes a lot of different types of data. Shared with, shared with you before, how we are using the feedback and surveys we previously had to make changes moving forward, regardless of the model of instruction that we are in, and that hasn't changed. We did link survey results here, so if people are looking at our reopening plans, they don't have to go and search for those survey results, they can see what they were, which allowed us to pick these four items from which we made decisions. We did get a lot of feedback that it would be helpful for us to put our definition of words because different districts, different people use different terminology. We hear parents using the word homeschooling and once I talk with them a little bit, they aren't really meaning the true definition of homeschooling. They're meaning virtual learning at home, which, in which the school district provides that. And so it was important for us to have on slide six here, definitions of what we're talking about. Some of these could mean different things in different places, and so it was important that we all have the same working definitions. We shared the three models for which we took a survey on. And right now, as we've continued to say that our preferred model to be is in-person. We know that there's a lot that is lost when we can't have that personal contact, and that is the model that our school system has been delivering and is the most, is the most adverse, or versed with at this point. We do know that it is possible, however, that either starting or at some point, we may need to go virtual. So as shared before, we've been working simultaneously on both of those. I know that we have gotten asked, why did we abandon the hybrid model? Some districts might be going forward with that. One of the things that is very challenging in all of this is comparing different situations with different districts at different places. And so we're not judging other districts in decisions they make, just like I would hope the reverse would be true. The size of our district makes it challenging to create a hybrid situation. With our survey results, we also know that a hybrid model in which it's partially at home or partially here, and no matter how you do that, creates also challenges. Some of those models are easier for disinfecting and some are not. I think one of the big concerns that we still wrestle with is if our students aren't here on those other days, where are they if it's truly to mitigate the virus? And I think that's the biggest challenging question. If we don't know that they're in a place that can help mitigate the virus and are truly in situations that are making them more susceptible to it, then we don't know that it's a solution that provides that. And based on our parent survey results, that would seem to be the case. So, so it is a combination of that and also the number of staff members that we have and our situation here with the size district that we have, that we have not spent a lot of time developing a hybrid model. It doesn't mean that that would not be a transition plan back into if we were in a virtual model and need to come back in person. But right now, to be able to put our time on three different models and develop those with any sense of quality is very challenging. This is a new slide. I think it's important, as we've been sharing what we've been doing behind the scenes with our educator and staff to prepare for the 2021 school year, and we aren't just waiting until a decision is made and then starting. We have been preparing to go back in either a Model A or a Model B and what that means. Model B for virtual learning will not look like this spring, and I want to, I want to continue to say that, you may hear me say that several times. We wouldn't have done such a comprehensive of a survey and spent our staff coming in in early July analyzing it if we weren't serious about taking those and making changes. So it will not be what we saw this spring, what many people refer to as remote emergency learning. We've talked about investing in Canvas. We've talked about training our teachers more on that, spending some time, doing more synchronous learning and making it very different experience. So I want to be clear that when we talk about that, what we're doing behind the scenes to make sure that we're as ready as we can be. We're not just sitting behind the scenes and that may not be visible to a lot of people because that work is being done, not out in the public. I did share the September through one through four is a change since we last talked two weeks ago. We talked about it administratively, that regardless of what model we are in, coming back to school this fall will be different. So if we are in person, there will be a lot of different protocols and safety measures that have to be in place. And so using those four days before Labor Day to bring in, whether it's 25% of the kids each day or however we do that, so we, so teachers and staff have enough time to walk kids through those processes, how, how the bus, the drop-off, all of that stuff works and to be able to go to those protocols, and then fully start everybody on September 8. If we are starting the school year in virtual mode, it will be important that those students have at least some contact with the teacher they may have never met before and before they are in a virtual world. One advantage we had this last spring is the students knew their teachers before we went into a virtual world. They don't have that advantage. There might be some cases, but for the most part, students haven't built a relationship up with that, neither have parents. And so those dates would be critical to having those students at least have some time to, to get to know in person and also to pick up all the technology and instructional materials that they would need to have. If a parent at that point does not feel comfortable even sending their child at 25% capacity for one of those four days, that's not going to be an absolute have to. But we do know that it's important that there is some type of opportunity, especially for our little, little ones who have never met an adult in person, to at least have some contact and what that looks like, we'll work through all of that. So I wanted to share that, that that is what we are recommending, to use those, those four days to be able to build up. We aren't doing a transition day, which was August 31st, and remember, that was to allow students to transition to a new building. We think all of our students are going to have to transition this year to whatever it is that we're doing. It will not look like the beginning of school of any other year. And so that is our recommendation to take those four days right before Labor Day and look at them a little bit differently. I'm going to pause at this time before we get into Model A a little bit and see if there are any questions at this point.
So how did you come to the decision to make a decision on August 17th? That gives you enough time to implement your decision and enough time to let the most recent data absorb in?
Yes.
And it is enough time to put your plan of action into action?
Because we are simultaneously planning for both of those plans right now and because we have to use Canvas regardless of which model we use, either for homebound instruction or whatever we end up doing for distance learning, we are, it's not changing what we're doing for prepping. We know that parents would like a decision sooner than later, and yet I started out by talking about how important the data is to make decisions. And so if we were forced to make a decision today, right, everybody's going to have great hindsight by August 17th. And so I feel like right now, I like to make decisions based on data. And I feel like at that date, we can still start the school year in a timely manner and do what we need to do, but we can also see where the data is at that point and what additional information we have. As we talked to the health departments, they tell us, without a doubt, four weeks ago, I was telling you and not even hesitating to start school in person five days a week. That was absolutely green light go. Right now, I'm not so sure. That's what they're telling us. I don't know what four weeks from now will be or six weeks from now will be, but at least we'll be at a place where we have the data as it is and a point where we have to make a decision at that point. We had, the board was coming together by the 17th, and so I felt like that was the date in which made the most sense.
And what is the data? What, 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 what is the, what is the data that makes that decision?
I think it'll be a variety of things. As I shared with you, we are doing another parent survey. We were, one of the districts that took our parent survey ended the latest. A lot of other districts took their surveys in May or June. Ours went right up to July 13th. We are taking an additional parent survey to find out if in Model A, how many would do distance learning. We're taking a staff survey. We have not asked the staff specific questions about their return. We need to do that. That's a critical piece in our ability to plan. We will also have additional case data from health departments. We will try to see where, where are we with the spread of the virus? So it's all of that data collectively that we will have. So it's all of that data collectively that we will have.
Okay.
I think the other thing to note is we will have a meeting on the 10th as well. So we'll have another conversation update on the 10th. And we'll discuss this as well. Let's just come up with a final and an update on the status of the session.
We have a meeting on the 17th?
Yeah, we have a meeting, a normal workshop meeting on the 10th. We have a supposed to have a workshop on the 17th that may be converted to a business meeting depending on what happens with this topic. And then we have a meeting on the 20th.
And are we making the decision to move forward or whatever are we doing, or is it coming to us? Is it?
Decisions we will be voting on, and actually this is going to get to that.
Yeah, I probably could have. That's a good question. It was one of the things I forgot to jot in the beginning. So the plan right now, approving a plan has a lot of operational steps in it. And so we don't want to have you approve an operational item that we may have to change based on circumstances, but there are decisions that the board will have to vote on and decisions that the board has to make. As a plan as a whole, so you will see action items that will be brought forward to you that you will have to vote on, not per se every step of the plan. I will give you an example of an action item you should expect to act on. Mandated face masks. You should expect that to see as an action item by the board, and you will take action on that. I can bring forward a recommendation, but the board should act on that. There might be other circumstances. We don't know all of the HR policies right now, but there could be some HR policies that impact compared to we talked we approved an employee handbook, if you remember that. We also said we might have to come back with some other policy changes. Those would also be something that the board might have to approve. I don't have an exhaustive list of all the action items that the board will need to take. So this whole plan as a whole, we want to be careful about what's operational inside of it and what's a policy level that the board should approve. So to answer your question, the board will be taking action on some items related to reopening this fall.
Because everything I see in this plan that we're reviewing tonight is operational. Correct?
For the most part, I would say that so what I just shared with you about September one through four could be considered a change in the calendar, although depending upon how we structure those days may not change the instructional minutes or what we do. So that could be. Some of the policies around grading or teaching and learning that might be linked to it could be a board policy.
Could we start earlier than September 8th?
Well, September 1 is the scheduled date to. Are you talking about?
No, by law. Do we have to start on the 8th or can we start earlier?
No, you could start September 1, which was our scheduled date, which we are, just not we're doing more of a tiered approach to start because of all the changes that we're going to have to account for.
So those days that students will come in and meet a teacher, those count as school days?
So depending upon how we do those, right now, those would be full days with groups of students. We haven't talked on all the details about that. So there could be some kids at home that are synchronously logging in while part of their classmates are here, just to be able to have those as instruction, but not have so many kids through the hallways as they're learning about when you wear a mask, when you don't wear a mask, if that's what we're doing, or whatever that looks like.
Okay. Or anybody else? Or so I might be jumping the gun a little bit. So you put links in to, I guess, an email to us looking at local neighboring district's plans. So it seems like their plans are kind of all over the place at this point as far as what like I guess what I'm saying is we when we first started discussing this in mid-July, we thought that most schools were going to be open, and that seemed like what our neighboring districts were doing. Now it seems like some are hybrid, some are remote, some have said different levels of when they're going to do different phases. So it kind of seems like from that starting point, a lot of districts have spread out into different directions.
Within our neighboring districts, they're still pretty much where we are. I would say that there's a couple who are looking and they're using parent surveys. So if you looked at what they are, they are still looking at their in-person, allowing for some distance, which was, I think, the big change that we all did. I think, you know, Greenfield, I know, has their board meeting tonight, and they they are asking whether or not they want to consider that or not. And basically, that's sort of what we're putting out, but we're saying that we're going to delay that decision because the data isn't there, because we can't get people to commit to gating criteria yet, and so I don't know what that looks like. I'm not here to point out any district, but I do know that, you know, they are they set up their own gating criteria, right? But that's their own gating criteria, whether or not. So I would say that they're not that much farther apart than they are there, and they may or may not take any action tonight either because so I would say they're not as far apart as what you might see. A couple large districts have made decisions already, but right around us, we're pretty much all on that same taking a parent's survey and getting it back about the in-person, what how many people would do distance learning.
Stephen, can I suggest you turn your piece?
I like it that way.
Well, that's what you like.
You better know. Thank you.
You'll thank me after you see the video.
Okay. Anything else? Go around. Anybody? Not at this time?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, we'll move on. So we are starting out with Model A and then everything that follows from that because Model A is the most complicated to plan for with the most logistics. I don't I'm not saying that it's the hardest to deliver because virtual doing it right is also difficult, but it has the most logistics. And so we started from that place of it, as I shared with you before. What you are noticing that's different that we did not have, and this is where we're constantly changing, is that we did notice while there was a majority of people that did, based on the survey at the time we gave it, say that they would prefer that an in-person five days a week was acceptable to them, that we did realize that there was a percentage of people that did not feel comfortable. So I believe that what we tried to do in this model was expand it to accommodate that. We're calling it distance learning for a couple different reasons. We don't want to confuse it with virtual learning in which our whole district is doing virtual learning, and we want to be very clear that distance learning may or may not be a Whitnell teacher and course. Here's the big dilemma, and I think as we were talking about busing contracts, this was the dilemma. How many parents are going to ride the bus? I don't know. Tell me how the conditions are for my child to ride the bus. Well, I can't tell you the conditions for riding the bus till we know how many people ride the bus, right? Same situation here with distance learning. I get that parents want us to tell us exactly what distance learning will be. Who will teach it? What classes? How? I'm going to give you an example, first graders. We have seven sections of first graders. If one first grader in all of our sections, if that family says, I want to do distance learning, I believe we will try to work to see how we can get that one first grader to be in a first grade section so they are synchronously, to the best of our ability, What if it's 10? Now, how do we do that? Two in some of the classes? I want to be very aware of the burden that our teachers may have to have of trying to be fully here and present with in-person classes and then having these other kids over here and giving them the same amount of attention that they would so they are here. I'm not sure. What if there are 22 first graders? Most likely, we could take a one of those first grade teachers and they teach an entire section of first graders virtually. So depending upon parents' responses to how many first graders would do distance learning really makes a difference in how I respond to that question. And I get it if I'm a parent of a first grader, I may not want to respond to that question till if you can just tell me. I just gave you three different answers on how it could be. I get that. But without that data, it makes it very difficult for us to plan. There are providers out there, Wisconsin Virtual School. I want to clarify this because we've had a lot of people mention this on a variety of mediums. Wisconsin Virtual School is not a school. Parents cannot enroll in Wisconsin Virtual School. It's through CISA 9, and it is meant for school districts to get courses, either with or without an instructor, to augment or replace courses in their district when they have a student who doesn't do who does not fit under the, you know, maybe in a circumstances in which they need to do that. So Whitnell School District would engage with the Wisconsin Virtual School and say, we have eight students that need geometry, three students that need AP chemistry, two students that need English 9, and we would pay for that. You can do it a couple different ways. You can either just have the curriculum all online and one of our teachers monitors it, or you can also have for a fee have a teacher, a Wisconsin licensed teacher, maybe some of our teachers are even teaching in the evening through the Wisconsin Virtual School, teacher and course. They would get a transcript from Wisconsin Virtual School, of which our counseling office would take, and they would put it on the transcript as if they took it. I know there were questions about what about the grade? We would put the grade on the transcript, but just like if a student gets graded at a different institution, because the grading criteria is different there, could be either easier or more difficult. To bring that grade in and to embed it into a Whitnell GPA calculation makes it very difficult to do. We don't want that to be a reason why students do or do not because of the grade transfer in. So we would put the grade on their transcript. It just would not calculate into that. Hence, luckily, we had some of those conversations around GPA before because that becomes a little bit less complex moving forward. So when we talk about distance learning, it may or may not be a Whitnell teacher teaching it, depending upon the commitment. And that's why we need parents to say, so the 10% of people on the survey who said, I'm not it's not acceptable to send my child in-person. If that same 10% of people signed up for distance learning, we'd have to see at what grade level that was and be able to figure out what solution we would be able to provide, which may or may not be a Whitnell teacher. I want to I want to I want to talk about school choice, and I want to make sure that people understand that because I know that that's a question that and some of the comments that were asked tonight were around that. Homebound instruction means that you are here in-person and for a temporary amount of time, you are not here in-person. Maybe you're quarantined, maybe you're in isolation, and you're out for six or seven days of school. Maybe you broke your leg, which is a reason that kids go on homebound right now. But you are you have a schedule in-person and you will be returning in-person at some point. So at that point, as we've always done with students, they will be provided homebound instruction. We will be adding a lot more technology so we can try some synchronous and even recorded stuff so that student is more engaged than just paper packets. But someone who is in homebound, there is a DPI form for that and is very specific to be in homebound. The plans aren't that they're on a homebound for the whole year. It is that they meet the criteria and it's a temporary placement. We do have school choice on here because it is always an option. We did feel the need because we do have a significant number of open enrollment in. The parents knew that if you are not a resident student and you choose to go back to your resident district for this year or try opening, rolling out to a different district, there is absolutely no guarantee that you will get back into Whitnell after this year. And so we felt the need to let let people know that if they they made that choice. If you're a resident and you either try open and roll out or homeschool, because you're a resident student, you can come back to Whitnell. So are there any questions on this model and the different, I guess, boxes that are here or instruction?
I was just going to say, could you just say that one more time? Because I saw that on the slide too, and I think there was, I don't know if it was on something before, just because I want to make sure people fully understand that if you do live here, whether you open or roll out or not, as long as you live within the district, you can still come back. It's just if you are already an open enrollment student, you're not guaranteed placement when you come back, correct?
Correct. So school choice, you need to know you need to know yourself if you're a resident student, resident or not. If you're a resident, you always have the choice to attend your public school of which you are a resident at. That's always a choice. But if you are not a resident and you are here through open enrollment, if you choose to leave in any of those modes, homeschool, go back to your resident, try a different open enrollment, virtual school, you would have to reapply and get put in the whole lottery process again for open enrollment. There is no preference given given to that.
Thank you.
Yep.
So go ahead, Steve. Jesse, I'm sorry.
So if it was a resident and they decided, okay, this first semester, I'm going to try something else, are they allowed to come back the next semester or is it the next school year?
They could at any point technically they could return, right? They have to understand that, you know, when you're doing that, you're going to want to make sure that whatever you're doing at that point, there's an easy transition for the student, whether it's, you know, at high school, it gets a little bit trickier making sure you're not losing graduation credit. Different districts have different requirements for a diploma. So you'd want to make sure that if that was the case, that you were, you know, looking at things like that.
Thanks.
So if this was if this is August 17th, and this is the model that we went with, parents would have a choice to choose any one of those four?
If it's August 17th and Model A was the decision, everybody is put into in-person. Students who qualify for homebound would have to fill out the paperwork, which goes to our Director of Pupil Services to ensure that through DPI, it meets the reason, or through the health department, are quarantined or in isolation. That also goes through homebound because it's temporary. We're asking by August 3rd, that's why we need a survey for distance learning, for parents to sign up for that so we can plan for it. School choice, you can take your student, you can choose to homeschool your student at any point. Open enrollment to a different district or private school would be dependent upon their timelines. That I can't tell you. So part of the timeline is having parents sign up by August 3rd if you are going to do distance learning if we do Model A, so we can use the time between August 3rd and 17th to talk about how many first graders would do distance learning? How many sophomores? How many students in this course would do it?
So they would have a choice?
By August 3rd, they have to make that decision.
So I know we offer some form of homebound instruction currently. We don't call it that now though, right?
We do, but it is we try to do like we have a staff member that meets sometimes off-site with a student or literally goes to their house, hence homebound because they're not able to get out. That teacher is the connection for teachers like, hey, I'm going to go and visit so-and-so. I need the work. I'm going to collect the work. I might have to give them a test off-site. So we currently do that. I would say we don't utilize a lot of technology in synchronous instruction. So we give books and assignments, and the teacher can email back and forth, but we don't say, hey, you can join your chemistry class at nine o'clock and actually learn with them. We're going to really enhance our homebound instruction, which we hope carries through past this year, not just for this year.
Okay, thank you.
I want to make sure we, I mean, this is a critical piece to understanding this model so people can understand it really clearly and putting a glossary out there about what each of the different pieces mean.
Well, I was going to say, I don't want to jump the gun because I think it's going to be addressed later. So I think I have a because it'll be because you're going to talk more about what happens with Plan B, right? Okay, then.
Yep. Section one has three pieces to it, and I'm going to go through those three, and then Jackie and Mike have sections in here. And I know we have people on Google made our principals, Todd. I don't know if our school nurse is back or not. She had a situation. In case there are questions for any of them. So I'm going to go through these next three slides, and then after specific questions that any of them can answer, they will come up here and answer those. So our health and safety protocols, right now, our recommendations for face coverings, and we're following the CDC guidelines for that, what that looks like. We continue to use the word practicable. When I go back and look at the survey, we had seven 65% of the people say it was acceptable. For the people who said, I'm not sure or no. For the people who said, "I'm not sure or no," when you read their comments, I would say probably 40% of those were related to, "I have a four-year-old or five-year-old or I have a child who has special needs and I can't imagine them keeping it on for seven hours." And we recognize that. So it's very hard to get into every minute of the day, when will there be, where and when there won't be? What does a mask break look like? All of those types of things. So this is the high-level piece of it. What I want to let you know is that principals are taking each of these things and sometimes there's links and if you looked at them, they're not fully developed yet because they're, they are pulling parent committees and teachers. We need our teachers' input on all of this. So when you're going to ask, "What does it look like for a third grader at Hales Corners Elementary?", that's something at a building level. And so those, those protocols will get developed as they work with parents and teachers specifically to get some of those answers. But this is the high-level expectation of face coverings. Physical distancing, we are going to, as much as possible and practicable, create physical distancing. Physical barriers, which you see some here in our computer labs where you just are next to each other that close. There's no way you can do it. We do have plexiglass in a lot of those situations. That won't be the case everywhere. That's just not practicable. So we're trying to look at situations and all of that. But there, there will be some physical barriers that, that are not just plexiglass, but some other things that you will see in a lot of the places. There are some enhanced disinfecting protocols, different than our normal cleaning, if you clicked on that. What I wanted to, if you took a look at the return criteria, this was shared by the, the Greenfield and Hales Corners Health Departments, put this together. This is their guidance because we've been working very closely with them. This is sort of their cheat sheet for any staff member or student. People, we get asked the next question about, "When can somebody return?" So these are the three situations. If you were diagnosed and you have symptoms, and if you were diagnosed and don't have symptoms, and then the term of being quarantined is if you were, had close contact with someone who was diagnosed. So these are, these are what the Health Department will give you clearance for to return. So these are high-level health protocols. Our health section has a lot more details. These are the overview on health protocols. If somebody wanted the Cliff Notes on some of the answers. The draft notification, if you took a look at that, that is the letter that they would work, those are their, that we would work together with them as far as, and that's from the Greenfield Schools. We all, we're also working with Hales Corners. So it's all of our private parochial. So depending upon where you are, you either get both logos or just one of them. So we would go and add the Hales Corners Health Department. But because it's a draft letter, I didn't, they are still providing me with the final letters on that. So that's why it says draft letter. Anything under here? If you, if you went to the Health Services page later, you notice that there's a lot more thing around sick rooms and health rooms and all of that stuff. So this is just the overview around health and safety protocols that we are doing. School buildings, overall guidance on some of the things. Each building will go through their protocols. So they have considerations of questions. Are we going to let kids play with balls during recess, right? Those are questions that they need to work through. What does that look like? How does that look at? And everything else that's there. Lockers and cubbies. When can kids go to those? We know that Hales Corners Elementary has cubbies as compared to our other school buildings that have lockers. And so their protocols will be a little bit different. So these are specifics. Over, overarching principles, I shouldn't have said principles, guiding principles. And then our building principals will take these and talk about their building specifically. Kids each have some nuances.
Is there a plan in place to periodically review these with staff and students and parents?
So when I talked about the September 1 through 4 date, we're going to need that time to talk about where's the drop-off. So our plans would be to even create some videos with what this looks like for parents and students and what this looks like, some training videos around that. What does lunch look like? That's why we took those September 1 through 4 dates. This alone is going to be changes to what every kid is used to. And so we've talked about for the last couple of years, right? We only have one entrance that kids can come in in the morning. Guess what? That can't be the case anymore because you can't have 825 high school kids coming through the same door. We now have to open up other entrances or exits. Parent drop-off, bus drop-off might be in different places. So kids who are so programmed for those things, we're going to have to change some of their routines and what that looks like. That's why we built those September 1 through 4 days in there, honestly.
So two questions. I'm talking about September 30th or December 4th. Not, I get right away, but continuing.
To see if it's working, you mean, or if we need them anymore?
No, continuing to keep that, all these practical principles in the forefront. Is there a plan in place to keep that information in front of the students?
To keep retraining them about what they're doing?
Reminding them?
Sure.
Are there, yeah. I mean, I, I think it's wise that, yes, I get it that we have it in September 1 through 4, but also in October.
I can let middle school and high school principals talk about that, but, and elementary principals would say that elementary teacher is a primary goal of what they do constantly is reviewing rules and routines and going through that as they do part of PBIS and what are expectations and all of that. So I would anticipate that that's going to be part of what we do at the elementary ones. I think we're going to just need reminders, right? We talked about this crosswalk that we've had in this parking lot here and we need to continually remind high schoolers that that's there for a purpose. So that's going to have to be built in more. So I can let either Chris or Charlie, when we get to that point, address how their plans are to reinforce the rules again if we start to get lax a little bit on some of that.
And with more entrances or exits, how do we secure them?
We're, we're working on that. Whether we put an adult there, whether we, you know, have, it's only, we have an adult and then it's locked. It lets people in, but we're also having, we may have to staff that. That's part of the staffing issue that we need to go through.
Have we thought of additional SRO?
Um, no. I know that they don't have enough staff, but they also have some C, community, what are they called?
AIDS?
Resource Officer, whatever.
Community something, yeah. So we've talked, we've talked about possibly doing that, yep. It does seem like now we're compromising one thing for the other, right? But they, it's, it's hard to coexist at the same time. We do, we have talked about more cameras.
No more than a year ago, we, we enforced our building to the max, right? Got money from, from the, from the state government. Did all these protocols to weed them through one, one, one opening.
Yep.
Now we're going to open them up.
And I don't know that it's going to be a free-for-all. I can see something, I've talked to, you know, I know Chris and Ryan are working through things and Charlie and Russ are, but at the high school, it may be that parent drop-off is in the front of the building and bus drop-off is in the back. Even something like that. So we're not opening every single door. Then we would need another adult back there watching the bus traffic come in to make sure that it's only bus traffic that comes in. But, so it's trying to find that balance between that. Or only one bus gets unloaded at a time. Before, right now, you let like four buses all get unloaded at the same time. That can't be the case. We're going to have to let, and then do we need more lead time in the beginning of the day, right? So we don't want to compromise security at the same time, absolutely.
Anybody else?
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me? It's Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, Chris.
If Don's work, I apologize. So you're, you're asking a really good question. I think that whenever we look at any type of practices that we're teaching kids behavior or otherwise, it's never really a one-time teach. It's a continuous, continuously working at it, continuously teaching behaviors and so forth. This is going to be especially important because it's new to, to all of the students and to the staff. We're beginning to invite the staff in. We've had several staff come in already to really begin to talk about looking at their classrooms, looking at social distancing, looking at safety protocols from, and so forth. So that would be something we're going to continue to engage the staff with and get their opinions and feedback on. But I would imagine that, yes, we would, we would be working with the team to develop, you know, how to continue to teach the students about these things. Because as with anything else, you know, I think we're going to be really careful to start with and as the weeks move on, you have to continually bring that to, those safety issues to the forefront. So we're constantly being mindful of them because we have a tendency to slip into patterns. So, so yes, that, that would definitely be part of our plan.
Thank you.
And this is Lori. It's been part of our plan to have multiple locations, doors open for students as we've kind of divided them up by younger and older so that we don't have little ones somehow run over by bigger ones. So that practice has been in place and we've always had those doors manned by staff because we've done what we call a soft start and students arrive as they show up. So it's, it's not going to be too far off of our current practice except to say that, that, that opportunity to kind of help kids understand how to kind of come in instead of in the clumps that they might have normally have done, to kind of space themselves to create that, that bubble around them. So like Chris said, we're going to teach, reteach, continue to teach. I mean, even as we know as adults, the, how many times does it take for us to remember something that we are learning as adults? So we'll do the same for the kids and it will be never really done. If you think you're done, you've just begun.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. This is Curly. I, I'm just going to concur with Lori and Chris that at the high school level, we as well try to teach and reteach kids about behaviors and any adjustments and things we have, you know, hopefully become routine. But as we look at things, you know, we do have some supervision needs that we have to adjust. Have had conversations with teachers and folks this whole summer around some of those changes that are going to occur. Have some action teams that we're putting together to further discuss those things. But yes, we, we like the middle school and elementary schools will need to have those continual teach and reteach moments for our students about appropriate social distancing as well as the appropriateness of entrances and exits and other uses of our space.
Last, last slide here is on social emotional health. And just a reminder that, of our pupil services team and we do know that, we did hear from our survey that that is a concern. That is one of the things that parents did talk about, that in-person learning really provided with some of that connection. And if we ever were concerned about that before, I think it was really elevated. I've had parents who've called me who, who just have really talked about, they said they've never seen anxiety in their child before. They didn't even know what that was when they've talked to other parents or discussed it or, you know, like, "Oh, I don't even know what that looks like." Who've now start to see their child exhibit that. As we get into the summer and they've been trying to keep their child away from a lot of that and just really understanding what that means and what that looks like. So we did put on the, Jackie and her team put together a lot of resources on that Parent Resources page, as you clicked on that. And so there are some things that we provided to parents. But just what we are doing to provide some support to classroom teachers, how to continually teach lessons on that and the importance of that. You know, it brings up a whole different set of issues that we haven't dealt before that, that students might not understand. So if they've been with their family for a while about a lot of this and then how different people are viewing the virus, right? We know there are a wide range of opinions on that and how, now that everybody might be coming together on that, how, how do we talk to kids who have maybe differing viewpoints on that? Or, or how do we just address that when we all have to work and live in the same space? I'm going to pause and see if there's any questions on the last three slides before we move into some more of the operational pieces. If there are questions on any of these. I know that there's more on health and safety later, so I don't want to, if there's more questions, we know that that's coming up, but I wanted to at least address here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, going back to Slide 11, I just wanted to touch on the expected face coverings point. So from your earlier comments, it sounds like this might come as a board policy? Or kind of where's the thinking on that at this point?
Yeah, the board would take action on that. So the recommendation from us right now is that it would be, it would be mandated for our employees. And I want to clarify something, I think, because I did make a comment at our last meeting about we could not mandate it for students. And I want to clarify that because I still stand by that. The difference is when our Model A before was all in-person, and so if it's, if that's your model to mandate something then, that would be in violation of FAP. We've now added distance learning as an option to that model. And so now, if somebody doesn't like an expectation, there is an option for them. Before, there was not an option. Does that make sense? So if it's all in-person and that's how we do school and putting something on there that someone would say that there's freedom of choice for that, if there's no option, it's the only way that they get FAP. That would be hard to be able to enforce. If the expectation is that anybody who attends in-person wears a mask and if you can't abide by that, the option is distance learning because we now put that option within our Model A that can now be an expectation for students. It could always have been an expectation for staff.
Okay, and just for the acronym, the FAP is?
Free and, Free and Appropriate Public Education.
Thank you.
Section 2 is on school operations. To Quinn's point, this is operational, so I'm not, I'm going to go through it. But if you have questions on any of them. So transportation, again, talking about what that looks like. This is the situation until we know how many people will actually ride the bus. We said our goal would be to have no more than two people to a seat. We are not getting any more buses. So there's going to be some math that's involved there. So that may not be possible on any given route depending upon what the ridership is. We're, we're suggesting for self-transport that they are only if family members in your vehicle with you, within your household. If they are not, you should be wearing face coverings because you're in a vehicle when, which is a close, combined space. And we talked about drop-off and pickup more detailed by the building level, what that looks like and how we let the number of kids come through doors at any given time. School nutrition. Our, our building principals are working with our food service staff and developing some maps as far as changing maybe the flow of traffic to avoid people coming in-out at the same time so they have some bill, some maps by building. How we would do that. Expectation of wearing, when you're in the, the food serving lines, that you would have a mask on, but obviously when you're eating, not. The high schools specifically and the middle school are looking at how do we spread kids out when they're eating? And there are more options at the high school this year, partly thanks to the construction and a couple other outdoor spaces that at least in the beginning of the school year will be able to use. And so this is getting, this is really from a building level because each building has different situations. Elementarys deal with, then they go to recess. At lunchtime after that, will we have in one door and out the other so there's not any cross-traffic? So all of that's really being handled at the building level. And so there were some things Karen Stickert is working with, you know, what, what are the practices coming out from state and federal guidelines about can you have grab-and-go items? Everything will be prepackaged, obviously not a salad bar, things like that. And so I'm not going to talk to you about cucumbers and tomato and lettuce, but understand that we're following all those protocols. Health services. So I hope you took a look at each of these. There are some guidelines that our, our school nurse has put together and I think I shared with you that she is working very closely with our health departments. Part of the consent agenda tonight was to increase her Part of the consent agenda tonight was to increase her time this school year to be able to monitor that, in addition to keeping full-time health aides at each of the buildings. And so we think that in order to keep up with contact tracing, we feel very grateful that she's been part of that, so knows the ins and outs of that, as well as one of our health room aides has been part of that this summer. So that process, we feel like will be able to stay on top of that. Student and staff absences, standard student absences, anything related to COVID, we are going to run through our school nurse, so she can manage it from a timeline and keep track of that, and she will then notify building secretaries as far as the students' attendance, excused, getting all the documentation from that, and then route that back when they are ready to be able to return. Staff absences, that is one of the HR things that we are working through about telework. What does that look like for if you do telework during a pandemic? If you are just in quarantine, you yourself haven't contracted, or you tested negative but are in quarantine, are you able to telework? And so those are the things that we'd like to do. We know that there will be a shortage of substitutes, we know that already. The question is, is if the teacher is teaching remotely, but the kids are here in person, who is the supervisor? We still need to have an adult here on-site that supervises them, even if they're not delivering instruction or are an expert in that. So those are some of the logistics we're able, where we're trying to think through And that was section two.
So I was curious if there's going to be some system for like temperature checks? Are we doing temperature checks at entry, or is that an at-home thing before you come to school thing? It sounded like it might be an at-home thing, but will there be like a daily symptoms check or anything like that in place?
Not at school, so we've been hearing a lot of that, and some of the, with the HIPAA and some of those guidelines, you know, private daycares and that can do some of those things. There's a lot of concern about doing that, and the liability of the district of taking that, and the accuracy of those readings. And so we will, we are working with our health departments on sort of a public servicing that we are encouraging families to do that prior to bringing their kids every day. Here's the symptoms you should ask your child or check your child for. But our capacity to be able to do that, and the HIPAA laws of us having that information and the accuracy, if a staff member took the temperature and either read it wrong or it wasn't there, and then found out later that the child had the virus, the liability with that part of it, and so that really is a parental piece in our mind. And then keeping, and keeping that data, we're also concerned a little bit, we know, and I think some of you have talked about, what happens when, we know what happens when a child gets lice in a classroom, right? That becomes the, and we don't want any stigma that might happen about everybody's lining up and taking their temperatures, and then a student gets pulled out of line because, you know, so how you would do that in a way that was discreet is also a little bit challenging with facilities unable to do that. So we are going to strongly encourage every family to do those symptom checks before they come, as we are every employee.
Thanks.
I am going to let Lynn come up and talk about the teaching, learning, and technology part. She doesn't have to do before and after school if she doesn't want, but, because this talks a little bit about our pieces as it relates to that Model A.
So Seth, section three is going to deal with our teaching and our learning, and then our technology as it relates to teaching and learning. So you can see your subcategories there. We're going to talk a little bit about what the homebound instruction looks like, and what that entails, the homebound program itself, the teaching and learning pieces, student services, technology, before and after-school activities in this section. So when we're looking at the transition to and from homebound instruction, we have created a model, because this is an existing practice, so to speak, as we mentioned earlier, and this is designed to serve the students that are engaging with our in-person model, yet they have, for whatever medical reason or situation, have to pull out of that in-person model temporarily, but they will eventually be worked back into the in-person model. So we don't want people to confuse the homebound instruction with the distance learning, for instance, because homebound is meant to be very temporary, and there's a cycle that puts you through. There is a link for the process, and so there is a nice little flow chart here that's not that. So there's a process for what happens when someone all of a sudden has the notification that we have to pull out of school, and whether it's a quarantine situation, or the broken leg situation, or what have you, there's a process that will then engage. So there is family courses of action, and there are district courses of action. So family notifies, and so we've got a whole flow chart there of notifying, the district nurse gets involved, and then also our academic learning coordinator will get involved. And the district nurse will coordinate things from the student is going home, and the medical pieces, and what have you, and then our academic learning coordinator will work with counselors, and with teachers, and with family parents, and be sort of that liaison piece to keeping the student engaged in the instructional process while they are out on homebound instruction. So in the homebound program, there are going to be specific conditions for placement, so it's just going to be due to conditions that are currently covered under the homebound instruction program per DPI. And then we have other things like, that are new to us, like the isolation awaiting test results, and the mandated quarantine situations mandated by the health department, and otherwise underlying health concerns, and that type of thing. The management of the program is just going to be our own, really paying attention to that flow chart, and getting a well-defined process of who notifies whom, and then what happens in that sequence. And if you notice, that chart has a circular idea to it, where you start in in-person, you work your way through that system, and you work your way back into the in-person model. We have a synchronous teaching and learning model that we're developing, the link is there. It's not totally comprehensive at this point, but it really is going to outline for teachers, if you have a student in your class who is homebound, now you've got 22 students who are here in person, and one who is homebound, what is that going to mean for how you work that situation? Because in that situation, we're probably not talking about a separate teacher or a different teacher, we're probably talking about that student being in attendance virtually in a classroom that is mainly filled with in-person people. So we've got checklists, and we've got sort of a teacher will, and little reminder checklist of what would a teacher do when you've got a mixture of a student or a couple of students on a Google Meet, mixing with the students who are in person. And that's going to take a little practice to have both worlds. We've been practicing it over the summer in some of our teacher meetings, in our curriculum meetings, where we've had some in-place, in-person, and some on the Google Meet, and just looking at how seamless is it, how clunky is it, and getting checklists together and processes together for teachers to make that a more seamless experience. Likewise, we'll have a checklist for students as they're in that homebound piece, to say if you are homebound, here is what you are going to do, here's when you're going to log into that class, here's what you do step-by-step. So it's a side-by-side process, so teacher can see what student's supposed to do, student can see what teacher's supposed to do. That will, again, take a little bit of practice in the instructional piece, because teachers are used to having either all of their students there, or now, all of their students off-site. The homebound will get us into having a little bit of both worlds coming together. And we talked a little bit about this a couple weeks back. So as we are looking at adjustments for 2021, one of the big questions that we've had to address is, in that emergency school closure last spring, what happened in the academic world? You know, what did we actually end up being able to cover in that more virtual and remote environment? What kinds of things did we have to leave off the table because it just got to be too cumbersome, and we just could not get to everything because of all of the disruption? So our teachers worked a couple of weeks back in teams, and they are continuing to do this work now, and they're working to clarify what things got left uncovered in 1920 school year, and then what does that mean for the 2021 school year? So they are working with their level up and level down teams, and trying to say, okay, if we didn't cover this, what does this mean for this next level? Where does this now get covered in this next level? We have some things that didn't happen in seventh grade, they must happen in eighth grade, so the teachers are figuring out where in eighth grade will this happen before we can really set them up well for the rest of the stuff. And there's a ripple effect. So if we now are adding some things to an eighth-grade class, what does that mean for when they go to ninth grade? And so there's like a couple of levels up now, and making sure that we just are understanding where we can, where we think we can get caught up, or we might not be able to get caught up even this year yet, because we may have more disruptions than we would like, and then what does that mean for that next level? So it might be a couple of shockwaves of things academically, as we're trying to cover all of those things. We have the synchronous teaching and learning model, again, with that homebound focus, when we're really trying to say, what does it mean to be synchronous? We did not do a synchronous-type model last year, last spring. We were really very asynchronous, where we had everybody off-site, teachers, students, and nobody really attended a scheduled class after class after class. We just said, teachers are posting assignments, teachers are hosting office hours, but there was really no schedule and time-bound schedule going forward. So that was very asynchronous. Synchronous now means that we are saying, there's a school schedule, there's a building schedule, this class starts at this time, this class starts at this time, this class starts at this time. So there will be a logging in, if we are virtual, or if you're homebound, and we're going synchronously, you will be logging in at specific times, meeting with your teacher, with other classmates at that same time, and instruction is happening live, so to speak. We'll also have a plan in place for those students that might not be able to access a synchronous schedule, so we always have to have a fail-safe, because if you have a student that can't be, for whatever reason, on a class at 9:00 AM because of some other family responsibility, we're going to have to have recorded classes and alternate times for teachers to meet with those students.
That's a huge improvement from what we had in spring.
Yeah, yeah, it'll provide a lot more structure. The important thing, I think, is to cover both worlds, and make sure that we're offering that synchronous structure, because we did hear from a lot of parents and students, while we just want that structure, we just want the schedule, we want to be able to know when we can access and be dependent upon seeing peers or seeing teachers. We also want to be respectful of a high school junior who maybe is left to care for a younger sibling or something that, okay, I can't really get on this class right now, what are my alternatives? So we want to have an alternative in place as well. But, yes, the structure, I believe, will help clarify a lot of things. Any other questions on that? Okay, we're going to stay on this slide for just a second. So then there are other considerations, like the assessment and grading pieces. We forced some things to happen in the spring that we had been working toward, but like a lot of things, we sort of pushed people off the pier and said, swim. And one of those things was pre-assessments. We had been working with teachers, saying, you know what, best practice right now is to really have a good system of pre-assessments. So instead of just going out of the gates and start teaching a bunch of stuff, know where your students are before you start teaching them, so that you can deliver appropriate instruction, and know that if a student comes in knowing 80% of what you're about to deliver, are you really going to make her or him sit through 80% of that just because we don't have another plan? So we really wanted teachers to think about pre-assess first, and so in the virtual environment, like, we don't know anything right now, so we just need to know what do they know before we start engaging. We want to hold on to that practice, because teachers got used to doing it, where some people didn't do it as a regular daily practice, or regular weekly practice with their lessons or their units. We want to be able to hold on to that learning, and now take it to the next level. The other thing that we are going to change fundamentally is that several years back, and if you've been on the board for a while, you probably remember this coming through, we went away from reporting quarterly to just reporting at the end of a semester. So we would just go from beginning of the year, we'd have this like progress check time, where people said, well, go in and look at Infinite Campus, but it was sort of informal, end of semester, here's the grade. Same thing for second semester, halfway through, go in and look, but it became very nebulous and kind of floating. We're going to go back to more of a quarterly reporting system. So we have, not exactly quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, but we do have, we did have to report. As opposed to just letting the whole semester go, in the hopes that chunking, making smaller chunks between actual grading periods will just allow teachers to plan differently and plan more succinctly further out.
And this is where we have to engage our teaching staff heavily. So working with the health and safety components, things like our art rooms, our computer labs, our science lab, tech ed areas, we really have to figure out what are our safety protocols going to be, materials, shared materials, shared spaces, all that hands-on stuff. The band room is a kind of a nightmare place, you know, in the middle of the night, you know, how do you socially distance there, how do you wear masks, playing this much most of the time? So we have to think about a lot of those things. So once we get parameters set, we're starting next, actually, next couple of weeks here, pretty many teams have been saying, okay, this is what we have to work within. How do we see this being not working in this particular space? And we're considering that. So, kind of, we'll just see.
Seth, in the spring last year, we were forced to move to virtual meetings in order to continue to conduct IEP meetings, as well as any meetings that would refer to our English language learning, or teaching challenges. So to reduce the number of people coming into the building, we will continue those practices. I think they went well in the spring, so many parents will have already experienced those. In the student plans, we will need to add language to address the virtual learning environment, so that it's clear that the services need to look many differently between in-person and a distance learning or virtual, depending on the choice. So in some cases, either the services that are delivered, or the supplementary aid, the things that we do to help these students be successful and to access curriculum, length varies depending on the environment. So we will address those individually in each student's plan. When looking at that, many of our related service staff, special education, travel between buildings, and so right now, or previously, they would have set their schedules really to accommodate the classroom schedules and when they needed to be in there. You will need to reverse that a little bit to limit the travel that they're doing, so that they're not moving back and forth between buildings, just to make the tracing and contact that much easier to look at. And when possible, we may consider what we would have done traveling into a classroom, is it possible to now put that staff member in the classroom via technology, and do some of the practices that we learned to do in the spring last year, and even then we may be face-to-face here in school, implement some of those techniques. And then lastly, each of our buildings has a sensory room, and they're very tight-staffed areas, and so to limit that, and really tighten up our structures, we put some different rules into place, so that we have time to sanitize in-between students, whether that's ping equipment, or any other things that they will touch, you know, there's lots of manipulatives. We're going to limit the room to students who are receiving OT or PT services, and then after that, we will move equipment to either the grade level, so that hopefully we can implement those in the classroom or in the hallway, and take our movement rates that way, rather than have to travel through the sensory room.
So the next slide is how we are going to deal with technology and technology access. So this is mostly about devices, and how we're going to have devices in the hands of students. So if we're in-person in Model A, So if we're in person in Model A, we are looking at what would be pretty much our typical setup. So we've got our fourth through twelfth graders now have one-to-one Chromebooks. We have our second and third grade have shared Chromebook carts, devices in the classroom. And our 4K through first graders are also sharing devices. So that will stay the same. If we're in Model A, that's how we're expected to continue. If students go into homebound instruction, then we will make proper accommodations to make sure that they have something. If it's a fourth through twelfth grader, not an issue, they just take their Chromebook. If it's a younger student, then we will make accommodations to make sure that they have something to take home with them and also ensure that they've got proper access at home while they are there. The help desk will continue to deliver the, to be the primary contact and deliver services. And I think parents got to be pretty well versed during the virtual force to contact help desk pretty frequently and get help through them. The Canvas learning management system that we are currently onboarding is the new big thing. And it's going to be something that's going to make everything, well, not hopefully, it's going to make everything more efficient. There's going to be a learning curve with it. So we are currently training teachers. We started training a core of teachers last week, and we'll continue that this week. And then all teachers are coming in throughout the month of August to get training. And then we will have support, support office hours through the training, and we will have practice sessions for their, for them to come either personally, in person, or virtually to work through what they need to work through in the Canvas learning management system. The Canvas system is going to be the primary source of delivering content. It's going to move us away from using all of the different Google classrooms, all of the different platforms, all of the different have to click through, you know, ten times through IC, all the different Google classrooms, all the email notifications. For teachers, it's one dashboard with all the courses on one dashboard. For students and parents, it's one dashboard with all students in the family on one dashboard and all of their courses on one dashboard. So it's sort of a one-stop-shop experience as opposed to trying to go to all these different things and have all these different logins and passwords. It's like one login, one password, all your stuff is there. So we're really working to streamline that whole communication, two-way communication, and make it much more efficient for everybody involved. Parents will have access to a parent portal, and they will be known what is known as an observer in Canvas. So they can pair with their students' thing. They don't need to try and steal their child's Google Classroom access code. They just get a pairing code, and they can go in and look at anything. They can access everything the same way the student can, one-stop-shop. They can see everything that they need to say. Steve? This will be for all students. So there will be no more Google Classroom. They will still use Google Forms, and we will still have Google Accounts, and they will use their Google Accounts to access Canvas. But things can be imported. Teachers can do a little video message to students. Teachers can see how long a student was logged in and doing, working in Canvas and log the time or look at the time and say, Lisa walked in, you know, came in here and like spent thirty seconds and came out, and I haven't heard from her since, I better check up on her. So there's a lot more power to the Canvas system rather than just using the Google Classroom. I don't know, Lisa, if you want to add anything to that? No? Okay.
Is it up and running right now?
Canvas is just finishing building and loading all of our information into it. So we've got that smaller group of thirteen teachers working in it right now. So it's pretty much working, but it'll be working by next week.
When do we expect parents to have access to that?
Right when school starts because parents can't get access to it until teachers have built their own individual classroom setting in there. So teachers will be working in March, or March, at the end of August or through August. And then as school is approaching, then parents and teachers are going to get their own how-to guides. Our dream is that we have everybody coming in face-to-face at least that first week and engaging with teachers so students can like walk with teachers through the Canvas thing together in person, we hope. If not, then we've got some how-to guides and some videos that everybody can access. And we're going to also have office hours for parents and students as well. So we'll have like support sessions set up.
On this screen is specific to athletics, clubs, our before and after-school care. Our principals have been meeting with our programs that do that care, looking at their capacity, what changes they will need to make with their programs. And then looking at our community groups and rentals, if we're going to sanitize before, after, one of the concerns I know that Todd Iverson has had and legitimately so is that if we are, if we have community groups here late at night and our custodians have to disinfect after that, but yet we need to have our custodial staff here during the day more, so we have more during lunch and that because we do have a second shift of custodians, but if we need to move more of them on a first or a one and a half type of shift, will we be able to do that? And that may not be the case. So we may need to limit some of the community group outside stuff if it's late at night. That's going to be a balance depending upon how much disinfecting or cleaning between activities. So I think Dave Pentec and Todd and Mike are in conversation with districts about, you know, is there a surcharge for some of that? Or is it just we have to limit that right now because we can't clean and disinfect to the level that we can when it's just our own people, especially in internal groups like that? And so obviously, there would be a matter then of prioritizing what that looks like. So going back to some of the actions that the board might have to take, if we believed that there was a different fee structure or there was a different way that we look at community groups, that's something that the board would, that we would revisit because that is something that's related to fees. So I think that's that. Briefly talk about Model B, and then we'll come back to any of this stuff. So this is, again, virtual learning, everybody is in virtual learning. Lynn did a good job of describing that through Canvas of what that looks like. Everybody is using that model. So there really isn't homebound instruction. But obviously, school choice exists. So if we end up going Model B, everybody's virtual, and you absolutely do not want that, you want your child to be in person, you could open and roll out, you could choose a different model. So school choice exists. I mean, it always exists, not that we're encouraging that by any means, but we felt that we had to put that on there as, at least so it's on the diagram. I'm not going to go through each of the links down below, but what we would say, and I think Lynn did a good job of overseeing that as we talked about that, we don't want the schedule to modify too dramatically when we switch, if we switch, or if we start. Because if we start in Model B, obviously, the goal is always to get back to in-person. And so we have to look at what that looks like. I think one of the top five questions that we hear from people is not understanding the asynchronous part. Lynn did a good job of explaining that. One of the questions is if we have both parents who are working and my child will be in childcare if you go virtual, I can't be here to watch their nine o'clock math class. How will I do that? So obviously, we talked about recording those so they can watch it later, working with our teachers to have some outside of the normal work hour so the parents could contact them at some point. I think we'll have to take a look at that. But we know much more engagement with students and families is needed. And yet, we know that for some families, if we go virtual, that may not work for them. The difference this time with virtual as compared to this spring is that many workplaces also shut down at that same time. And so while it was not ideal, there were still adults at home at that point. And so I would say, what I'm hearing from parents now who are emailing me is that if you choose virtual and do synchronous learning, how will my child get that? Because they will be there by the childcare place or somebody will be watching them that they can't do during the day learning. And so we understand that reality. And so it's trying to find the balance of providing much more real-time instruction with classmates and teachers and trying to replicate that, but also knowing that that also doesn't work for all families. Grading, we are not going to have a dramatic grade shift when we go from one, if we're virtual, but we also want to make sure that the conditions of technology are not creating that. I think we're more prepared for that, so have to look at that. But we always know that individual circumstances always exist, and so we're going to look at them more individually than necessarily a global piece of that. We've talked about the platform and the device and access already, so I think those are covered. Last thing is to share a timeline where we are now. This isn't part of our plan, this is more my communication to the board. As far as parents, starting tonight, tomorrow, getting out a survey, I wouldn't encourage parents to necessarily start completing the survey they have until Monday to fill that out. It's only for parents who are going to choose distance learning, if Model A. So not every parent fills it out. So you're automatically enrolled in in-person learning for Model A unless you've completed the survey. So if I'm a parent who says I absolutely want in-person learning, you don't go onto the survey and say, I want in-person learning. You do nothing. That's consistent with most other districts because if Model A, Model A is the assumption that it's in-person. The exception is to take the survey and say that I would want distance learning. We have parent meetings scheduled. Prior to coming in here, I think I have about two hundred of the three hundred slots filled for the six parents meeting over the next three days. They are all virtual. We gave an opportunity for parents to submit questions in advance. They can ask during the meetings, in the discussion, knowing that we may not get to all of them, but we really want to make sure that, we also want to make sure that parents aren't getting into their individual child situations or identifying information about their family, that they are questions. And so if we don't end up in time talking about all of them, we will get back to them and address them because sometimes hearing about it face-to-face is different than here's a plan, just read it and interpret it for yourself. So next Monday, we want parents to have, those who are choosing distance learning for Model A will need to have committed to that so we can take a look at the numbers to see what would distance learning look like? Will we be outsourcing courses? Can we make that work within our district or what that looks like? For staff, a very similar timeline. I sent out, we have nine or ten different meeting slots for them over the next three days, for them to sign up to hear more about this, ask questions, very similar. And then sending out a staff survey, Mike and his team will be sending out questions that we need to know about intentions. If there's a situation that they will not be returning this fall if we are in person, what does that look like? We know that there are a lot of HR questions as it relates to the CARES Act, short-term disability, sick leave, telework, all of that. So those are very personnel-related questions. Their survey also closes next Monday. So next Monday, when both those surveys close, we will take a look at the data, we'll start to see what that says. We'll continue to watch cases and see what the cases are doing. We have those conversations and see what the up and down looks like, continue to talk with local school districts and see what they are, and keep the board informed where we are.
Any questions? Karen?
Yeah. So on slide twenty-six, we talked about synchronous learning. And so I have a question about, you know, how many hours the kids are going to be directly on the screen, you know, especially at the elementary and younger levels? We, I can understand how this might work better for kids who are a little bit older, you know? As a parent, I certainly have had the experience of having, you know, my kid having a classroom chat and like, you know, they're kind of there, but they're kind of drifting. So I was just curious about the number of hours and what that might mean.
Yes, I think we want to be clear that just because it's synchronous does not mean that it, you have to sit in front of your computer six and a half hours, just like when a student is in class in front of a teacher. It's not just listening to a lecture for fifty minutes. So there might be a mini lesson, it might be go into a group and have a discussion, it might be doing something like there, but it is a matter of at nine o'clock, there's going to be a mini lesson. So I want to be careful that we're not, just because we're synchronous does not mean you're stuck in front of your screen for six and a half hours.
And I'll just add really quickly to that, that that's part of the guides that we're going to put out for teachers and have teams work through, is the expectation of, you know, if you've got a fifty-minute class, that doesn't mean you sit there and talk back and forth on the computer with all of your students for fifty minutes. There's going to be some creative, you know, thinking that goes into, okay, so maybe there is that ten-minute mini lesson, but now I'm going to work with these five students. Everyone else, here is your assignment, you go work on this. Or, you know, some of you, you know, I'll touch back with you, you come back on here in twenty minutes and we'll, you know, touch base. But it's not going to be full-on fifty minutes. So we're going to have to have some scenarios, have them kind of work with each other on how to make that actually work with each other before they work with it with students.
Thanks.
Nancy? Jesse? Stephen?
Should we end up going to virtual learning and it, even after all this and everybody makes their decision, those that initially chose the distance learning, it's going to be the same thing across the board at that point, I would guess, right? So if, if all of a sudden, you know, the, however many first graders chose distance learning, and then all of a sudden we choose we have to go virtual, or are we looking to separate that because there's still a possibility that we will go back in person and thus we'll still need to make that distinction?
It's a tricky question, so I want to make sure that I've been hearing it. So it's a great question. If we end up starting school virtually, so one of the things is if we end up not, if we end up purchasing a course and a teacher from an outside provider, there's a cost to that, and that's an additional cost that the board will have to approve for our being able to do that. So at the point that we have to make the commitment, which is, I think, a twenty-eight day, depending upon the vendor we go through, there's a timeframe. At that point, we've already had that cost outlaid. So if on August third, parents say, I want distance learning, if we come back on August seventeenth and say we're going virtual, at that point, it's two weeks, we would have everybody go virtual. If it's September thirtieth and we started in-person and September thirtieth, we go virtual, people who chose distance would stay distance because again, October thirtieth, we could be back again. And if they chose at that time to be not in-person, there's a reason why they chose that. And so the reason we're coming back might not meet their criteria for coming back because they didn't start that way. I don't know if I answered that quite clearly. So there's a balance between when you can or couldn't.
I guess the other thing, too, would be if for some reason we end up going with Plan B and we end up going virtual, when, depending on the situation, I assume we would be looking at coming back, but would it be, or coming back in person, but we'd be, no matter what the situation, be staying virtual for the semester and reevaluating it the next semester? Or could it be at certain points in time that we could determine, okay, after this threshold, we're hitting this? Or what might that look like?
Yeah, that's a great question. And we're really struggled, I'm struggled because we don't have gating criteria, right? Because a lot of times it's and, 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 and. And, you know, people would say that if you're starting virtual, you better be careful on what it looks like to come back because the time that it might be is when typically flu season kicks in again. And so you're in this like dilemma, right? So I think that there is this challenge of, if you start virtual, you better plan on the semester being virtual for school because even at nine weeks, you're hitting the end of October, beginning of November. And that's typically a time when we look at a lot of other things happening. So even if we were virtual, there probably would be a phasing back. And I don't have the gating criteria to say what that is or how we would, you know, bring kids back. There would be some, I don't think it's all of a sudden virtual one day and all of a sudden, we're all good to go. We'd have to look at what does re-entry look like? But at that point, I can't imagine, we would have to, if we went virtual as a district, I could see us maintaining virtual for the semester even if we started to phase back in for some families. And at a semester point, because that's how typically outsourced vendors provide it is by the semester, then we'd have to make a decision by the semester.
Yeah, I think that answers it. And I kind of, I did want to make sure we established, because I know there was a lot of questions as to whether, you know, if it, well, if we go virtual, but then we do, or if I initially choose distance, but then we go virtual, am I not getting this? And I want to make sure people have a good understanding of why there are the differences in there as far as when we might go back, what we could go back, and then those contracts so that everybody kind of understands this is why we have to make these decisions and why we need the parental input before we can actively show what it's going to look like.
Yep. So vendor contracts, and there's a cash outlay on behalf of the district to provide that option. Second of all, if you're choosing distance, it's probably because you have some strong convictions of not sending and the safety of that right now. So without our being able to tell you of what it is we return, we'd need you to commit to that for the long term. And from a transition, the courses may not align exactly with activity standards and that will, but it would be too hard to jump in and have that. So semester time is the breakpoint, I would say.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Mr. Williamson? We have the money to pull this off.
So we have a couple of different sources that we typically don't have, which would be, one would be the CARES Act dollars. That right now, what we've really put that towards is the Canvas learning, right? So over the next, over this year, the Canvas platform, the CARES Act will cover those. It would get really tough not to go into fund balance if we have to start looking at additional staffing and all the staffing that might take to do some different things that we want to do. We'd have to be willing to possibly dip into fund balance if need be for those cases. But we've done a really good job. I mean, our budget has, we've done a good job budgeting, we've done a good job of, of building up a fund balance that is for these sorts of situations. And so, you know, we can cover these costs on a one-year basis, no doubt about that. Does that answer your question?
Sure. And has the state legislature given us any indication as to what the second year of our biennium budget will look like?
No, we, we are looking for an update still mid to late August from the Wisconsin Legislative Fiscal Bureau. I think you saw that there is some cuts that the state does want to make. There was a new act put out this afternoon by the federal government. I haven't seen what the dollars are for that yet or whether there's any backfill to state governments. I don't think there was, but I have to double check on that. So all that stuff's still up in the air a little bit. Again, I think the timing helps us, that the timing of all this that's happening would be very difficult to cut revenue limits and things like that in the second year at, at this juncture, the election, those sorts of pieces of work are in our favor to keeping that funding. If we keep that funding, we'll be in a good spot to handle a lot of the things that could still come up. I think from a, from a supplies and all those things, it's really not a budgetary concern on a one-year basis. Right now, what we're finding is more like supply chain issues than anything else. So for example, getting the Plexiglas here in a timely manner, getting technology here. We would probably be able, we, we would be, and in fact, I had on the budget to pick up an additional bus. Those things don't even exist to have. So it's more a supply right now as far as getting those things on-site than actual budgetary issues yet.
So then how do you prepare your budget for 2021? For the, for the annual meeting?
Yeah.
When do we know if we are getting what was promised to us in the first year, the biennium budget? When, when do we know that?
Yeah, so.
Or when does the legislature go back in session?
I don't know when they go back. Not till January, so.
January. Well, that's a good time.
Yeah, I, I don't want to, I don't want to give them too many ideas on how to, how to repair a budget in January. But, but obviously, if nothing happens prior to October, our revenue limits are, are safe and, and that would be funding that's in place. You know, I, I hear back and forth things. Some say, "Well, maybe it wasn't as bad as we initially thought it was," the economic impact. Really, in the next couple of weeks, we hope to get some answers about what that impact was. Regardless, I think whatever that impact is, it's, it's, it's going to hit us at least at some point. I think what's helping is people recognize the important role that education is playing right now. And you hear that both at the federal and state legislatures. But there's also a reality to what a revenue short come is. And so how do we fix that gap? Hopefully, it doesn't hit us in 2021 and we get some time to prepare for the next biennium.
So would it be fair to say that as of right now, some savings that we've realized and some expenses that we've realized has been a wash?
I wouldn't say a, okay, I would not say a wash yet. I think the savings on transportation, some energy savings. Yes, we, I'm almost talking out loud right now. Yes, we've kicked up some technology expenditures. The cost for sanitation is something we're still grasping. So for example, I don't know if we've mentioned this already, we've, we've bought five, have I mentioned this already?
No.
Five 55-gallon drums of sanit, of hand disinfectant. A drum is 55 gallons. Right now, a drum of oil is $40 a barrel, I think somewhere in that range. This hand sanitizer is $2,500.
How much?
$2,500.
$2,500.
For a barrel. So if sanitizer was made out of oil, that would be great. It's supply and demand right now. Plexiglas, we bought the last 40 sheets from this company. We're looking for 40 more still. I mean, it's, those costs are starting to mount faster than I think I realized at the beginning. And so I, I think only August and September will tell what these additional costs will look like as compared to the quote-unquote savings we had this past spring.
Is there any large expense coming up that we know?
I mean, there, there's some larger expenses to prepare spaces, larger spaces, making sure they're up to date and in order, that it can accommodate the sorts of gatherings that we're able to have in some of those larger spaces. Again, it, it would go to the sanitation and barriers that we're planning on implementing. Those are our biggest expenses right now outside of potential staffing that may be impacted. Staffing adds up quickly. And so if we notice that we need additional, you know, additional subs, additional, just people in the building to, to monitor what we talked about earlier, entrances, exits, that adds up fast, yeah? So I guess that would be my response to, are there any big expenditures? Staffing is still out there, yeah. And then, and then that's still a supply issue as well.
Any questions for Mike?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So that brings us to conclusion.
Wait, Quinn, I'm sorry, can I have, I have another one?
Sure.
Okay. But no, it wasn't for Mike. So just getting back to our big picture as, you know, as a board and as a district, and I know we've been in really figuratively and literally survival mode. But the question is, you know, when this is, when we're going down the road six months to a year and we look back on this, how will we know if we're successful and how will we measure this? And then I guess the question is, these aren't to be answered tonight, but how will we connect this back to like our continuous improvement, our dashboard, you know, our, our values that we laid out under continuous improvement, the operational excellence, student achievement, the culture and the community pieces? So I guess, you know, when it looks at the boards, you know, the things that we're supposed to be looking for and the things we're supposed to be doing, I'm just curious about, you know, when we look back at this time, how will we know how we did?
Well, I have to speak for myself. I think we need to take a timeout from that and support our administration here and now. And then when we get there, when we get there, who knows? I mean, we already, you know, because of the interruption in March, we don't have the school report card, so we've lost some things. We do have testing. We are going to have some testing in place. Yeah. So there, there will be some data there. But I think we may not, it may not be, it may be that we made it through this and no one got hurt. Or we made it through this and we had to switch to this option and we did it. I think you're asking for something that we just don't have the answer for right now.
On the other hand, I think that the way the administration has tackled this has been within the framework of what our vision is and what our strategic plans are and how we're engaging the community along the way and how we're, what we've kind of, or what's been prioritized and what we've worked through. I think that we're still following our mission even down this path.
Yeah, it just doesn't look like we expected it to look or like it would. No, you're right, but we're following the same principles and same guidelines. It's just not looking how we would expect it to. So as far as continuous improvement, that journey is not going to stop. Obviously, we have Jen coming in. She's going to help with putting together the data, but the data we look at for this year is probably going to be very different from the data we're going to even look at two or three school years from now. Because we are in survival mode, it's a fluctuation between are we going to stay in-person all years, is there going to be some sort of virtual learning capacity? So it's the fluidity of going back and forth and making sure that we're identifying gaps and addressing them as quickly as possible, not necessarily how are our students scoring on ACT tests or whatever it may be, because at this point, that's the least of the concerns. It's making sure that we have educational resources for all our students in whatever medium that may be.
I don't have a specific answer to that question, but I need to take a couple of minutes to sort of address a couple of things. So this is part of your team, the rest of them is sitting there as I can watch them, but they are at capacity right now. And if you know anything about me, I absolutely believe in continuous improvement. And I have to, I have to have a reality check to be able to say at what point, a lot of my colleagues who are districts who've been in continuous improvement efforts for a very long time have said, "You can't simultaneously manage a crisis and continue on with the continuous improvement efforts in the same way." Does not mean that we're not looking at our four focus areas. I'm going to take culture, for example. Where we were and what we were looking at in building culture right now is about as far away from that. I will tell you, the daily struggle and pull right now between where staff may find themselves and what parents may find themselves, there is no perfect resolution to that and that absolutely plays into the culture. So what we would have done before to look at culture and address that, we've been just given this overlay on top of that, that whether it's the parent lens and where they were and how they looked at the district prior to all of this, or where the staff were prior to this, this entire situation adds a layer on top of it that we can't assume that we can just keep on going with where we were about culture before that. And yet, we're as concerned as ever about culture, but we are in a very different place. We are still just as concerned about student achievement, but we're now worried about the gaps in achievement, what didn't get learned, the equity in achievement. But to say we're going to go back to where we were on student achievement and now we're worried about the next score from where we were, that's unrealistic. When we look at the financial situation, where we were before and all of the pieces that Mike had in place for strategic plan, we are absolutely concerned about financial and fiscal management, but we're looking at a very different place where there could be a budget repair bill. There is federal money that it either is coming or is not coming, CARES Act stuff that didn't exist. So I want to be very careful when we talk about, it's not that we don't care about continuous improvement, but the elements and factors that have been put into the scenario right now, we can't ignore that they dramatically shifted how we're going to look at any of those and we need to pause to see what impact will those conditions have on where we move forward. We can't ignore the fact that any of this happened. And the impact specifically on culture is absolutely critical. It's the thing that breaks my heart every single night and I wake up every single morning. There's not a staff member that's not concerned about what we're going to do for the safety and healthy of, health of them. They're also concerned about their, the students that they won't get to see. It's an ongoing dilemma. And parents are very concerned about, how can I, can I keep my job if my kids are virtual and I'm not working because I have to report to work and I have no place to take my students? And if they don't, they will miss out on learning. If I choose distance learning and the kids next door don't, will my kids be missing out on some social, emotional connection that other kids will get? This whole thing is taking a toll on everybody and we can't ignore that part of it. So I want us to keep in mind, please, the capacity of people that you see or don't see. And I can't ask more of staff members right now than they are already giving, and I won't. So I just needed to say that because it wears on all of us. And every commented email I get, I take very seriously and I can hear the emotion behind every email that gets sent. And it's not dismissed because I think every staff email, parent email conversation requires a response. And that takes a toll after a while because there is no easy answer. In fact, I don't think there is an answer, let alone easy. So I needed to say that, so thanks for listening.
Okay. Anybody else, any questions on the timeline?
Just like to say across the board, and I think you were kind of alluding to it, but with all the time and effort that's been put in for trying to figure out what's going to work with very little direction from any governmental leadership bodies, it's just been tremendous, I think, across the board for our district. Everything's kind of all over the place and no one-size-fits-all solution exists for this, but all the time and effort that's been put in of trying to come up with the best possible solution and contingencies and contingencies upon the contingencies really speaks volumes about the quality of people we have working here. So I'd just like to thank everybody for that.
Anybody else?
I, I think that you and your staff have always, have always been working on continuous improvement and even in this time, you are working on continuous improvement. Just the difference for the virtual learning, as it may be in the future versus what it was this last, you know, fall or the last spring, is a huge difference. And so it may not be what you had originally thought you would be working on for continuous improvement, but you are always working on continuous improvement.
Anybody else? Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you all for the presentation and for all the time that went into this. Thank you. Onto eight reports, superintendent's report.
The other thing I'd like to add is we haven't talked a lot about construction. From the high school, it's moving on pretty rapidly and I know that, I think Todd is still on here somewhere. No, Todd was on here at some point. We are looking at having sort of an open house, if you will, for the, for the construction. And if the board is interested at our April 10th meeting, we can do a pre-meeting walk, walkthrough to see where we are in progressing with that. I will say that we have added a few things into the, that courtyard. We originally did not have a covering or if you will, a sale, if you know what I'm talking about. But when we realized we're going to have to use that space probably to spread kids out, even if they're eating or whatever that might be, we've looked at shade because it does get a little bit warm in there. That was discussed at, at one point. We've also looked on the outside of the building on the other side about creating a seating area that, that kids can eat outside. We're trying to get as many kids outside or in spaces that they can. And then also the courtyard that's up here, there was a huge overgrown tree, like it, I don't know, it took up half a courtyard. So we are adding some crushed gravel there and some seating out there so kids can actually use this courtyard a little bit more, both for learning, so we're going to try to move as much learning as we can outdoors, but also for eating as that, as that relates. And so I did, I'm going to, I know I forgot to call it up, but I'm going to, I do want to share with you some of the facilities. The other part we did for the, for the library is that we are redoing that space a little bit, reorganizing the books. Jodi Sabar and her team have gone through and weeded some of that, but organizing them, but just the layout in the library will allow that to be a little bit more open and friendly. It will allow more kids to use that space if we need to spread kids out from the lunch hour in which we planned on having students sort of sit there and wait. We may have to use that other side to have them eat with and now have kids who are studying come up to the library. So we needed to make sure that we were looking at, I'm going to show you, some of the furniture that we're looking at. So I wanted to talk about the facility and walk that through and then have an open house around August 25th, that week probably, of having that and allow people to come in and take a look at the facility that we haven't gotten. The other part of it, our roofing project in the middle school- The other part of it, our roofing project in the middle school is good and done. We're completed there. So, we're looking at, um, those projects that we've met, uh, pretty much on. Here it is. I'm going to take a picture. I want to show you one of the things that we, um, decided to get that was out. Yep. So, in our courtyard, our new courtyard and even the upper courtyard, um, Charlie found these for the high school. So, they are, they flip down, so they sit up like a bench this way. And so, you can sit on those. We're going to put those around the perimeter. But then at lunchtime, the back flips down and students can sit the other way and actually eat on them. So, that's, um, the composite furniture that we will be using around the courtyard there. So, it sort of serves a dual purpose as we're looking at more options for kids to be able to sit and eat when we look at those and at a really good price. So, they're getting a free publicity here. But that's what, uh, some of the furniture is that we were talking about to be able to put into the courtyard so be able to expand kids to be able to look. So, right now, I would say, um, that's probably the only other, um, project that we're looking at. Um, athletics, um, are moving on. Dave is following up with his protocol that he has where every student, um, has to come in and do reports on fever per day. And those are athletics, which are a little bit different because those are, um, a school, as far as keeping track of every student's coming in, what symptoms were, um, related to that. For us, it's been going smoothly. If you follow the news at all, you just get one case on a, a group of kids who are out for an athletic and it sort of wipes out a lot of that. I did want to talk about the WIA decision a little bit. The timing of August seventeenth with our meeting and when those sports can start, um, I think we're going to take a look at that. There are some conferences across the state. If you follow the Big Eight, which is the Madison area, they've already made the decisions. They will not have fall sports. Their conference will not participate in it. The Woodland Conference has, um, had some conversations and we will continue to be in contact. I think it depends upon how do these summer activities and dates go and what we're looking like, um, right now. So, we'll continue to look at what that is. I think some of the questions that we have across the state are if you decide to start in the fall and all of a sudden you get an outbreak of the virus and now your whole team is out, does that mean that you couldn't take advantage of that spring season that you need to do? So, there's a lot of questions that people have around the athletic season. And, and you know, that's an important thing for a lot of parents, looking at what that, what that looks like with the later date for some of the high-contact sports and the lower-contact sports can start, um, a little bit earlier. So, more to come on athletics. Obviously, it's trying to happen by conferences, so that's not something that you would do entirely by yourself, although we could make a different decision. Typically, conferences are sticking together with what they're doing for athletics for that. Those were the two things that I really wanted to touch on, construction and athletics, as far as my superintendent's report that hasn't been covered all right.
Okay. Any follow-up questions?
No.
Okay. Onto nine, board goals, a legislative advocacy, SWSA report.
So, I was not, I was able to attend both the board and the general SWSA meeting, but, um, because I'm in and out of my truck and working, I really can't take in too much. So, I've asked Karen, who was there for the whole meeting, to give us a report on the board part of the SWSA meeting.
Yeah, so I went to the, um, the SWSA board meeting, um, on July the tenth. And the SWSA is the Southeast Wisconsin Schools Alliance. And the reason that I went is because I was working with my, um, WASB peer mentor, Larry Dukes, who is on that. And I was asking him some questions about, you know, how do we as board members handle all of this return-to-school stuff? And so, he invited me to this meeting. And, um, so it was really actually great. There were many board members from Southeast Wisconsin who are partici- who are participating. And they asked some questions, you know, like, how are you supporting your superintendent at this time? Um, and how are you checking in, you know, what, what are those relationships like? And then, there were some breakout sessions where the questions were, you know, where are you in the process of determining your plans for reopening? Um, what questions are you still trying to answer? And what is your greatest concern? And so, based on that meeting, there was a set of like slides put together. And so, I have got a copy of that presentation that we could share out to all of the board members. So, you can sort of see, you know, what some of the other board members around the area were thinking back at that time on July tenth, which was, you know, a while ago. Um, and overall, it was, uh, it was kind of just a really neat experience to come together with other board members from other parts. Um, it wasn't as, you know, policy-oriented as I expected. And so, that was actually a really nice experience.
Thank you, Karen. And I believe the, the general meeting was two doctors from Children's Hospital? Wow. I thought they were very good. I can't tell you what they're talking about, but at the moment, I thought they were very good. And, um, one thing that Dick came on, I know he texted you, have we sent this reopening plan to our legislators?
We haven't yet because we really haven't approved anything yet. So, and we haven't made anything public, so I did not want to, I think my response to it at the time was I didn't want to send anything to the legislators before we formally had something out to our own stakeholders. So, as we make this public, we can definitely share a link with them.
Yeah, even if it's not our final plan, to let them know that what we're doing is.
Sure.
Because if one representative quickly just asks us a lot, well, so I think it'd be good to.
Sure.
Send it out to them and say, you know, here's what we're working on.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be great. So, that's all.
Okay. Anyone have follow-up questions? All right, thank you both. Onto ten, items for future consideration. Excellent. Eleven announcements.
Yeah. Uh, just kind of say this if people are still watching at this point in the video that, because we get a lot of emails and we see a lot of stuff on the forum and whatever else. Um, even when it comes to the emails, we do all read the emails. Depending on the situation, if there is a response that you're asking for, it either is going to come from Jonathan as the board president, as he speaks for the board, or depending on if it is more administrative, operational-related, it's generally going to go to the designated chain of command. So, a lot of times you'll see either Lisa or Jonathan respond. But I just want people to realize that just because we don't respond to emails, doesn't mean we don't read them. There's just protocols that we go through to make sure that there's a unified message and we have that spokesperson who's Jonathan when it comes to the board. But we do read everything that comes through and do notice that.
Anybody else?
So, I just want to say one thing. I wrote it down so I don't, um, stumble through it. But, um, just want to remind us as a board, uh, our exposure to all of this work is confined to a couple hours of meetings a month, reading, reviewing some emails, memos or presentations. Uh, we don't have access to the same level of information, number of resources, depth or frequency of meetings, conversations, let alone the level of pressure that the staff are dealing with on a daily basis. And the ability to step away from the stop and go back to a normalized. The administration staff don't have that ability as this topic has consumed their personal and professional lives for the past eight months. As Lisa's mentioned numerous times, there's no absolute right answer and these decisions can significantly affect the lives of staff and families. Just please keep that in mind as we go forward, whether it's as you're reading emails, whether it's as you're responding to documents that come out, right? Remember that these decisions, these conversations are born over hours and hours of work. Us coming in with fresh eyes, playing the Monday morning quarterback, right? You can always have hindsight. You always pick and choose little things here and there that may look wrong. But just remember the amount of time and energy that's gone into preparing this. And let's be considerate of that with the staff and give them the opportunity to actually focus on this so that they can be prepared for our students when we come to September. All right. Any other announcements? Okay. Move on to twelve. Uh, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five-one C to discuss A, administrative contracts, and B, superintendent evaluation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Karen?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Jessie?
Aye.
Steven?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
Quinn?
Yep.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Thank you.